The committee was audience to each of the proposers. Oral presentation and final scores were determined based on an instrument, a rating instrument, put together by the committee with advice of counsel. Based on that and on this scoring, the committee now is offering you our recommendation through this objective, consistent, and competitive process. And as for District One, Gaze Automotive and Towing; District Two, Mid Valley Towing; and District Three, Chryscenta Valley Towing. And I would at least parenthetically say, though, not to suggest any of this was not important because it's parenthetical, we all understood the gravity of this RFP process in that we had three spots that were open. Probably we're going to have more than three proposers submitted. And that our allegiance was to the fairness and the impartialness of this process. And so, in addition to this recommendation, we're also asking counsel to authorize an increased term of five years with two additional two-year terms. A longer term will provide the selected tow operators with more time to support and encourage their investment in the city of Glendale. In addition, a longer term provides stability to the public. Finally, the two option two-year terms provide the city and police department with the ability to assess needs, services, and market conditions. The resolution contains language authorizing the request to negotiate a longer term with the recommended tow operators. In addition to this, we are also asking counsel to authorize staff to negotiate changes in Section 38 of the draft agreement so that tow rates and their increases are tied to CPI versus the administrative process that is described in the current contract and the draft agreement. And with that, we'll open it up for questions.
Okay.
Yes?
Oh, do you want to take the?
Yes. Shall we take the cards first? Then we'll discuss?
May I make one?
Sure. Absolutely.
There was a protest. Can we just address that? Or is that not timely at this point?
That's fine. And I'm not sure I would characterize it as a protest. We had one proposer who initially requested more time and then is still requesting a separate, sent a separate letter or communicated through our office that they're requesting that the RFP be redone or other factors be taken into consideration. And then we received another letter today, I believe, from another proposer requesting additional time to review all the proposals that were submitted. So it's not a formal, I didn't view it as a formal protest, but they have objected to either the selection criteria or the process. And I think they're here and they'll probably address that during their comments.
Okay. All right.
Congratulations on promotion, Captain.
Yes. Okay, Robert Morris, followed by Robert Ring.
Madam Mayor, how much time?
Oh, I'm sorry. Three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Councilman. I'm Robert Morris. I'm the owner of Monterey Tow Service. I've been a provider in the city for the last 41 years as the official police garage in Glendale, along with my wife, as we're co-owners of the business. Back in 2005, the last RFP, I scored second in the, out of five companies. And during that time, the other two companies, the fourth and fifth places, were CV Tow and Gaze Tow. And the council, through many trips, decided to go with our, the three companies again for this last 11 years. During this time, I've been an excellent provider of towing for the city. Now, in this 2016 RFP, I scored last. And I don't understand. Some of my, I have 41 years' experience. My drivers have the same crew and same manager that I had 11 years ago. They're trained continually on the truck and in customer relations. We have an excellent service with the city. I did get a reprimand after 41 years in October of bringing the wrong truck that was majorly put in the comments. One of my drivers brought a wrong truck to a scene instead of a flatbed. He had his other truck, he had to go, caused the officer to wait an additional 20 minutes, 30 minutes. I brought the driver in that next day when I learned about it from the other driver, and I scolded him and disciplined him. Then I got a letter in December from the captain about this. Now, I think we were scored in '05 with 13, 14 points out of 15 on experience. This time, we were, we were hit with only seven points on experience. I don't think that was, took into account our, my driver's experience and mine and our company. And financially, we were scored in '05 with a nine out of 10. This time, we were given a one. Now, I'm, I was horrified with, I don't understand. I was, we're a good company. I pay all my bills. My employees are paid, my trucks are paid for, except for one that I have financed. Yes, I was late on some fees that the city, to the city. I paid them, they were current. I paid interest on those. It hurt. But all in all, I'm a very qualified company. I wish to be reconsidered. Thank you.
Robert Ring, followed by Andrew Kugler.
I'm the guy that protested. Robert Ring, attorney for Monterey Tow. As you know, Monterey has been in the city for over 40 years. The process, the RFP process, has objective numbers and nothing is guaranteed. The numbers are objective. The underlying analysis is flawed. There are problems with the way this was approached. And I want to address that, and I'm requesting that this matter be put over until the issues I raised are properly addressed. First of all, Mid Valley Tow, in its application, number 11.6, they talk about, have you ever been terminated or suspended? And they check the box, no. They do address an incident with Altadena CHP where they say, well, there's a stolen vehicle recovery. We moved the vehicle from one lot to another lot outside the area. And this eventually was reconciled with CHP and it was overturned. I don't know whether they were suspended or not, but the issue is this. The public records say that for incident number 106.5, and I believe this was the incident, and this needs to be checked out, on July 3, 2009, this was not a stolen vehicle. It was an auto accident. More importantly, the vehicle was taken straight from the scene to outside the Altadena area to their lot on Atoll Avenue. So they didn't, apparently did not, remove the vehicle from one lot and bring it to another. How the heck would we know this? At the time the vehicle was being removed from the accident scene, a tow company, Gerard and Peterson, happened to be there, they're very interested in the towing industry, followed the truck, took pictures, and made a written report to the CHP. That report was provided to your city attorney's office. If these facts are correct, and they warrant investigation, but if they're correct, then Mid Valley Tow did not tell the truth on its application. If this vehicle was not stolen, but just an auto accident, if this vehicle was not moved from one yard to another, but taken from the accident scene straight outside the Altadena area, that's not true. And our understanding is that shortly after this incident, they no longer towed in the Altadena area. This warrants investigation because Monterey Tow has never been suspended or terminated. And this is, Mid Valley is a new shiny toy. They're excited, and I think that's why they scored so incredibly well. But let's look. Are they as good as they are purported to be? They're not here in Glendale yet. Secondly, Mid Valley was, do I have to say 24 seconds left? Mid Valley was in the process of buying Chryscenta Valley Tow, and in that process, took its corporate name and took its mail, and that's being resolved. This is not an honest thing to do. And I presented these facts, your city attorney as well. And finally, when it comes to financials, you look at the financials for Monterey. They were doing a little over a million a year. You have plus or minus $5,000 or $10,000 in profit. You could amortize, you could do things. This does not show a company going under. They pay their bills, they have an excellent credit rating of 800. There is no problem to go from nine down to one. The same issue on experience. Never been suspended, never been terminated, been in this town for 40 years, and they were scored as if they never towed.
Thank you, Mr. Ring.
Thank you.
Andrew Kugler.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Andrew Kugler, I'm an attorney for John's Towing, another proposer. Honig Kabudian, the owner of John's Towing, is here with me today. We are the proposer that sent in the letter this morning, and I don't want to address any substance of a protest here because we haven't had time to actually look at the documents to see if there is a protestable issue. We requested records last week. The partial records, I think the scoring sheets in two of the proposals were provided on Friday. We thank the city for providing those. Unfortunately, though, two other proposals, including a proposal of one of the selected proposers, was not made publicly available till about 4:30. We were given notice at about 4:30 yesterday afternoon, so we practically couldn't even get the proposal until this morning. So obviously, with only a few hours to even look at proposals and digest them and analyze them, that's not really a fair opportunity to look at the award. And I, we appreciate that the city has really, at least said that it wants to provide a fair process. Captain Bracken just said he wanted to provide a fair process. I believe last week, when you continued the matter, it was continued because you wanted to provide a fair opportunity for proposers, other proposers, to look at the procurement file. And we really appreciate that, but we just haven't had that fair opportunity yet. So we're here to plead with you, to give us that fair opportunity to look at the procurement file. Will we file protest? I don't know. We need to look, see what's there. We may not, we may. But it's no reason to rush into a decision today. This procurement has been pending for nearly, I think, over five months. Let's take the time to make sure you have the right decision and a legally defensible position. Thank you very much.
I have one more card, Jesse. And I'm sorry, is it Elias?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, City Council, just a little nervous here. I just want to clarify the air. In '09, we had an issue with 91 GeoStorm that was brought in that had busted windows. The second yard in North Hollywood was actually listed with the highway patrol. We took it to the second yard while our primary yard was not full. We went through the review board with the lieutenant at Altadena CHP, and we were reinstated and the actual thing was retracted. Now, I disclosed it. There was no accident. The car was never in an accident. The car was vandalized. I don't know if it was stolen or not, but it was towed by Altadena. Now, as far as regards to Chryscenta, to Chryscenta Valley Towing, we were in process of buying it. Apparently, what happened was the place was burnt down to the ground, and they built it without permits, without telling us anything. Now, when it was built, they took our deposit, cashed it out, and they got violent, got caught building a building without any permits. And the place was a disaster. We have photos, numerous photos of different times, that the place was just, just asking for trouble, for somebody to fall or risk of injuries in many sense. Now, you know, I'm not here to discredit anybody here. I'm here to tell you, to speak for who I am. I'm straight. I'm open. And all I want to do is goodbye, you guys. I've towed for many different law enforcements, different agencies, and I've done good. I think there's a lot of room for improvement, and I think, I'm not saying I'm the best, but I'll tell you this, I will not let you down. Thank you.
And you're from city?
Mid Valley Towing.
Oh, you are from Mid Valley. Okay, it says city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, those are all the cards that I have. So open to discussion from my fellow councilmembers.
So I'd like to invite Captain up. And congratulations, Captain. I know you're freshly minted. I missed your ceremony. I apologize for that. Can you, can you address the issues raised in the scoring of Monterey Tow and that large drop of points that they had, please?
So, one of the things that they mentioned was that back in 2005, they scored very To me, that seems like kind of a strange argument to make because there's been 10 years that have passed, and we are now in the process of rating them present day and how that they've been doing. So with respect to how they did in 2005 and how they did now, to me, it bears really no weight at all. All of us came in with a fresh look and conducted our rating based on a scoring sheet that was developed. The five different categories, or one, two, three, four, six different categories were approved by council. The various subcategory totals were approved, and then those were broken out even further. With respect to what Mr. Morris said about the December letter he received, I don't recall that it was one, but it was actually three occurrences where they sent the wrong truck. And with respect to the VTACR late payments, he received, I believe, seven notices from the city for his late payments. And I say that to say, those are only two areas of multiple dimensions that we covered. So his, all the reasons behind why he scored so low, it wasn't in any one particular category, but it was in multiple categories. And so, I know they've raised an issue with maybe a couple of the categories, but if we were to rate them at the top of those categories, it's my understanding, they would still fall below the three. Any specifics, I'll be more than happy to provide that information to you. Anything related to finance, obviously, I believe we need to be careful with in terms of confidentiality, but Armin Harkolian is here and could potentially speak to those in general.
Answer my questions. Thank you.
A couple of questions. Yes. These are just questions, I'm not doubting your decision, basically. Item number five, references, they scored one out of five. I mean, what kind of references are these?
Well, that was one of the problems with their proposal is that, basically, when we ask for references, we're looking for reference letters, and there were not many listed there within that. So for their particular section related to references, we had no professional business references. We did have one letter from their, the company that leases them the property, that basically said they were a good tenant. But we didn't consider that, that responsible of a response because it wasn't, it didn't have anything to do with the service that they provided. And so, that was fairly deficient.
So you're looking for creditors, other companies, that other municipalities that they deal with, like in a good standing letter? Is that what you were, because after 11 years, if they've been towing? Again, I don't know any of the companies. I'm just asking this question for me to be clear. So after 11 years of working for us or towing for Glendale, how many years? Is it, do we still need these references from other companies, just a letter of good standing references? Or, and also, same thing for the financial viability. Do they have to provide their financials every year to us, or it's just when their contract is up? On item number six.
Okay, so we asked references for all of them, and the city attorney may be able to speak why that needed to be equitable through all of the companies. So I don't know that it would have necessarily been fair to say, hey, you've worked for us this long, you guys don't have to answer, you know, this section.
Sure.
So, and then your other question about?
Financial, financial viability. Is it, how often do they, do they have to provide their, their financials to us?
Well, just through the RFP, we asked for the last five years.
And also, if I add to that, that if, whenever they propose an increase to the VTACR fee, we then request the financials for that as well. Their financials as well, so that, so that the city manager's office can make an assessment that it's necessary.
And item number four, prior experience, is it, is it because they scored seven out of 15? And unlike from what is that based upon, based on?
So within the prior experience, we were looking at towing capabilities, responsiveness to service calls. One of the things that surfaced was having Cheryl Davis Moore on our committee. She is very closely related to communications, has worked in communications. And there were a number of times where they were called at night and they just didn't answer the phone. And the dispatchers just know that sometimes when we call at night, Monterey just doesn't answer. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. We're not exactly sure what the source of that is. And then we would subsequently call Gaze Tow. So that was one of the issues. The other issue was, as documented in the letter that was sent to them, with respect to the three issues of them sending the wrong truck. So there were some of those issues that were weighed into that, that overall dimension of prior experience.
Okay. Thank you.
And I apologize, just, I misspoke. It wasn't for an increase in the VTACR fees, it was an increase in the rates. If there's a request made, then at that time, they do need to submit their financials. But in conjunction with this RFP, we do have a set of financials from each of the proposers.
I have two additional cards on the item. So, Captain, Susan Grossman, followed by Hovig Kabudian.
I'm going to speak to what it is that I personally had hands-on with, which was what this gentleman was referring to with the Chryscenta Valley situation. I was instructed to personally handle the, putting together of a corporation because they were in a process of purchasing Chryscenta Valley. That was their hope, because they wanted to expand into this area. And I did consult with, and I have copious notes on all this. I consulted with the Secretary of State, and we determined that we could use a corporation with the name Chryscenta Valley Towing Service, Inc., and it would not interfere. It was formed with a separate corporate ID number. We proceeded to then go through the process of getting all of the associated permits to go along with being able to properly run that company, so complied with all of the laws. And as far as the mail situation goes, when Mr. Present, they had a fire at their location, and Mr. Present was not apparently conforming to code in his correction of the problems that happened to that. And so because of that, we were kind of stuck betwixt and between. So we started having things like employee pull notices coming in for drivers that we anticipated bringing to, to our new yard and whatever, and we had to put it somewhere. So we got a mailbox in our company name, not Chryscenta Valley Tow's name. Every time anything might have come in that had to do with their company, we were instructed to and did put return to sender or please forward according to the situation. And that's, we complied with everything. We didn't try to take their mail or anything like that. And we did consult every step of the way with the proper authorities, whether it be a permitting, like the motor carrier permit, the state, or whatever, even down to getting our IRS number so that we would not be creating a problem. Thank you.
And which company are you with?
Oh, I just work with Jesse Nellis personally.
Which is?
Which is?
Just Jesse Nellis personally. Just like a, oh, Mid Valley, oh, sorry, yeah.
Thank you. Hovig Kabudian.
My name is Ovi Kabudian. I am the owner and president of Hovon Wheel, Inc., DBA John's Towing. I've been in business for over 18 years in Sun Valley and my location, and I have a second location in LA for about five years. I've been towing for the California Highway Patrol over 16 years, and I've been in good standing. And I'm in excellent standing with LAPD Police Commission that regulates the towing in the city of LA. Just recently, last year, me and Mid Valley Towing, we both put in the proposal for the city of LA, North Hollywood, LAPD RFP, the OPG, the official police garage. And I scored slightly higher than Mid Valley, coming in second after the incumbent, and Mid Valley scored the lowest. I scored about 2.3 points higher. Yet, with the, with the city of Glendale scoring, I scored significantly lower, not slightly lower. I scored 49.2 where they scored, I believe, 82, which raises a lot of questions. I noticed they were really harsh on the scoring, and there's a lot of errors. For example, they put that I've been with CHP since 2015 where, but instead, I've been with the California Highway Patrol since 2001. And several other errors and things that we can point out, given if we are allowed to have some time, me and my attorney, hopefully, we could ask to discuss and point out more errors and perhaps get this thing done again, all over again. Because it just, we want a fair shot, and I think the city should possibly grant us this. That's it. Thank you.
Any other comments from, Acting Chief Povolitis? Could you give, shine any light on this process or this choice? I noticed that it's part of the recommendations of the chief are in our staff report. I want to put you on the spot.
Povolitis, Deputy Police Chief. No, I think when we came back to council originally, we put out an RFP we had not been out in over 10 years. So we've set forth the standards that we wanted to look at, to go out and take a look at what tow operators were out there, after the last agreements had been extended several times, and asked this committee to give us their best assessment of the facility's operations, experience, capabilities, and, you know, level of customer service that they would provide to the community. And that's exactly what this committee did, is they went out and gave everybody a fresh look. And you see the scoring as it came out from, from that committee with the recommendations that the chief and the police department is making to you for the, for the tow operators.
Thank you.
Question for, for the chief.
Chief.
If I have a contract for five years or 10 years or what have you, do I get a notice if there's a, if I send the wrong vehicle out? Is it the first time that I get a notice, or it's like continues a few times and I get a notice on that? Or for non-payment, or for not answering the phone? Do we, how does that work?
Generally, there's, I'm going to put it, there's two levels. You may get a phone call from the contract administrator, or in this case, the traffic period lieutenant, indicating that you have a problem. As it steps up, you may also get a notice indicating that there is, that there is an issue. And then going forward from there. As I said, though, as I said, we haven't really looked at the facilities and the operations in what I'll call great detail. So although things may meet minimum standards, obviously, when you go out and look at other entities, you know, you're comparing what everybody's done in the last 10 years.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
It's, it's not an easy job, I know, to, to score. I, my, thank you, chief. Thank you. My take is the fact that, you know, the chief is recommending the committee's recommendations. Captain Bracken has said that it's about fairness, objectivity, and integrity, and I feel that the, you know, that's what the committee was, was trying to do, the best job they could. So I'm ready for any motion from her.
Want to ask our city attorney, based on what they're, what they're asking us to do today, what is our, what are our options, basically?
Excuse me. Your options are, you can move forward on the item, or you can continue it to further review the particular issues that they raised, allow the attorney for John's Towing to get the additional documentation he submitted. Let me say this, at the last meeting when we continued this, I had just received the letter from Mr. Ring, and so I was trying to process it at the same time, determine what could we, could we move forward? And I just said, out of fairness, let's, let's continue it. Typically speaking, we don't really even give the proposals out to the public or to the proposers while, while that's ongoing, because then you're essentially letting other, the other proposers see what was proposed. In this case, we, we did, we have disclosed to those that have asked, only because it is, most of the information that is in there ultimately would be disclosed. And in addition, it doesn't provide anybody a negotiating advantage because the fees and the rates are pretty much set, the contract is set. But having said that, we got the request from Mr. Ring prior to last week's council meeting and hadn't received any other requests. And so we continued on that basis. We probably would have, you know, council may have moved forward at that meeting had we not received that request. The other request is late, you know, I don't want to say it's untimely, but it came later. I don't think the council is obliged to continue it. I think you have the information that you need. Staff can, if there were any other questions, staff can certainly address those. I think they're all, they're all answerable questions. And I do believe that they I think they're all, they're all answerable questions, and I do believe that they answered them. So at this point, it's really your, your decision whether to move forward or to provide a further, further short continuance.
And I'd like to see council move forward on this one to?
I have one more question.
Okay.
If I may. We have three districts.
Correct.
How were the boundaries of those districts determined, and did they take into account an effort to be equitable in terms of the business in each district?
I believe so. I'd have to ask Mr. Bracken. Are they the same districts from last? They're essentially the districts that we, if you, you might recall, because you were on the council at that time, we had, that was somewhat of an arduous process, and I think the districts were kept the same. And they are, for purposes, you know, equal in terms of business. So we're basically using the same districts that we already have.
So the districts, you think, are equal in terms of?
I'd have to.
I remember this was a, was a discussion we had, and it wasn't an easy discussion. I don't think we changed anything, but, because there's no fees, right? These, these contractors aren't paying a franchise fee to the city, correct?
They pay the VTACR fee based on vehicles that are towed. That's the fee that, that comes to the city. There's not another franchise fee beside that. We did not change the districts when we went out to this, for this particular RFP. I would not say that they're necessarily equal, but each company had an opportunity to, to determine or ask for what district it wanted to perform, and it had an opportunity to do its due diligence to see what the, the call load or what the workload would be in that particular area. So they're asking for the areas that they prefer to serve.
Yeah, and it seems that no one's protesting about the, the districts seem to be satisfied.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion? Move the, move the item as recommended by the committee?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Marpetian?
Yes.
Njarion?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Any other business?
There's none.
None? Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So move second.
Thank you.